School Committee Meeting of November 28th, and I'd like to invite Troop 41 up to do the, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes? If you want to go up to a microphone, that would be great. Did I catch you off guard? I'm sorry. I was told you were doing it.
Ready?
Go ahead, Jacobi.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we begin, I just want to announce that one member, Vice Chair Bodenhinder, will be participating remotely tonight. And Madam Superintendent.
Tonight's a night that we are going to be celebrating a lot of our students. So for the families, we just want to share that there will be a videotape of this meeting on our School Committee tab on our website. So please download it, share it with all your family and friends so that they can celebrate with you if they're not able to be here. Dr. Scazza, would you like to start? You have the button to press?
Absolutely. I have a video from the Unified Jamboree. Here we go.
So tonight, we're previewing, a short little preview of a video that will be shared on our social media platforms tonight, I think. I think we're waiting to hit that play button. In honor of Mr. Rzynski and Student Ambassadors, will you come forward so that we can recognize you for a moment? We asked, we, tonight, we are very proud to announce that Marlborough High School was selected to receive the 2023 MIAA District III Sportsmanship Award. This is a significant recognition. Marlborough High School was selected by the schools with whom they compete. The presentation of the District Sportsmanship Award took place during the 29th Annual MIAA Sportsmanship Summit at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough on Thursday, November 9th, 2023. Principal Dan Riley, Athletic Director Jeff Rzynski, MHS Student Ambassadors, Eva Van Brusken, Abby Carroll, and Akeef Samakula attended the summit. Thank you so much, and Nikki, I'm sorry. So thank you so much for representing all of you, Marlborough High School and Marlborough so proudly. Does anyone want to say anything? Mr. Rzynski?
We preach sportsmanship to the kids, and obviously it paid off, and we got recognized by those we compete with. So we're proud of that accomplishment.
Want to thank the student athletes. I know that we're in between practices here tonight, and we wanted to make sure that-
I came from the basketball practice, so.
I heard a rumor that you were going back as well, so potentially. So we wanted to make sure that we recognized you first and knew that, and that you all heard how important this was to us and how celebrated you all are, and we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
On and off the courts. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. As I said, tonight is a night where we're going to be recognizing students and celebrating a number of our high school students. We're going to start by recognizing the Daughters of American Revolution, which is the D-A-R, Good Citizen Award winner from Marlborough. It is great privilege that we recognize Rea Candaria as the Class of 2024 recipient of the D-A-R Good Citizen Award. Rea is known for being a driven, kind, genuine, and passionate young woman who exemplifies the D-A-R qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism. During her years at Marlborough High School, Rea has been extremely involved in our school community. Rea is continually giving back through her volunteer efforts, and she is always seen at every school event. Rea is currently the Secretary of the Class of 2024, and she serves on the Student Council. Rea is a member of the Regional Student Advisory Council and the State Student Advisory Council that works to have students have a voice in their schools. Rea is also a member of the National Honor Society, the National Business Honor Society, Business Professionals of America, and serves as a peer leader. Rea is a three-sports varsity athlete and volunteers with our Unified Track and Unified Basketball programs. One of Rea's greatest passions is being part of our Best Buddies program and working with our special education students through our Unified Sports and Unified Art and Music courses. Rea's leadership and involvement in the MHS community sets her apart from her peers. Rea is currently ranked in the top of her class with a 4.23 cumulative grade point average. Since entering MHS, Rea has demonstrated all the attributes of a hard-working student. She is incredibly focused and determined to be the absolute best she can be academically. During her junior year, Rea completed two Advanced Placement courses. This year, as a senior, Rea is continuing to challenge herself by taking on three additional AP courses. Rea has goals of attending college in the fall and majoring in either business or political science. Congratulations to Rea on her past, present, and future achievements. Rea will receive her award at a ceremony in March, but we wanted to recognize her here tonight. So thank you for being here. I'd also like to recognize our National School Development Council, NSDC, Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning. It is great privilege that we recognize Jordan Batista as a Class of 2024 recipient of the National School Development Council, NSDC, Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning. Jordan is a true leader at Marlborough High School and has excelled academically in his time there. Jordan has a reputation for being an honest, empathetic, committed, and passionate young man. Jordan has taken on many leadership roles, including a cellist and upright bassist for the school orchestra, a member of the MHS Jazz Band, the Secretary of the Tri-M Music Honor Society, and the Vice President of the Student Council. Academically, Jordan is a high-ranking member of the class with an overall GPA of a 4.83. Jordan has successfully completed three Advanced Placement courses and is then recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar. Jordan is currently enrolled in four additional AP courses during his senior year. Jordan is hoping to major in biomedical engineering or biochemistry in college next year and has an incredibly bright future ahead of him. Congratulations to Jordan for his past, present, and future accomplishments. We also, it is also with great honor that we recognize Luis Gustavo Bernardes as the Class of 2024 recipient of the National School Development Council, NSDC, Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning. Luis is the epitome of outstanding, what am I saying? Epitome. I don't think I've ever said that word before. Of an outstanding student and leader within his community. We have been privileged to watch Luis grow into a kind, humble, and hard-working student during his time in MHS. Luis stands out amongst his peers academically. The dedication he has put into his academics is represented by his 4.8 GPA and membership in the National Honor and National Business Honor Societies. He has successfully completed three Advanced Placement-level courses and was recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar. At the completion of his senior year, he will have taken a total of eight AP courses. Luis has been intentional with the courses he has chosen to take during his time at MHS and has always taken opportunities to challenge himself academically. Outside of academics, Luis is an integral part of the MHS community. He is the Vice President of his class and the captain of both soccer and volleyball teams. He is an advocate for others and takes pride in his abilities to be a mentor to younger students, is an advocate for equal opportunity, and has dedicated more than 40 hours of community service to our unified programs, including Best Buddies and Special Olympics. The work that he has done at MHS is reflected in Luis's natural ability to lead and care for those around him. Luis is hoping to study Computer Science and Finance in college next year. There's an incredibly bright future ahead of him, and whatever institution he becomes a part of, we'll be extremely lucky to have him. Congratulations to Luis for his past, present, and future accomplishments. We'd also like to honor our Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Awards for Academic Excellence winners. It is great privilege that we recognize Alexis Art as a Class of 2023 recipient of the Massachusetts Association's of School Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. Alexis is a natural leader at Marlborough High School. Academically, she stands out amongst her peers and has become an integral part of the MHS community. Alexis is humble and hard-working when it comes to academics. She is naturally bright and has the ability to be successful in whatever she puts her mind to. She's taken a variety of classes that have challenged her and allowed her to expand her knowledge in various subjects. At the completion of this year, she will have taken a total of eight Advanced Placement-level classes, and last year, she was recognized as an AP Scholar with honor. She is also an active member of the National Honor Society and has earned copious amounts of academic achievement awards throughout her time at MHS. Alexis has become an integral part of her community through her high school career. She has been a class officer for four years and is a member of the varsity basketball, volleyball, and tennis teams. She spends her time outside of school volunteering to coach girls' basketballs and has held various jobs throughout her summer breaks. She takes every opportunity she can to give back and be an active and supportive member of the community. Alexis is an eager and hard-working student. She intends on majoring in mechanical engineering. We are lucky to have Alexis as part of our community and cannot wait to witness her continued success after she graduates. Congratulations to Alexis for her past, present, and future accomplishments. Twenty-three, twenty-four. It is great privilege that we recognize Violet Wren as a Class of 2024 recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Awards for Academic Excellence. Violet is a true leader at Marlborough High School and a dedicated member of our community. During her years at MHS, Violet has been a member of the National Honor Society, the President of our Tri-M Music Honor Society, a member of our cross-country and outdoor track teams, drum major for the High School Marching Band, President of the MHS Symphonic Band, and recipient of the Harvard Book Award and multiple other faculty awards. Violet is the founder of the Marlborough, Medley Marlborough High School Social Justice Club's Art and Literary Magazine. Among her, with, along with her dedication to Marlborough High School, Violet has been a volunteer at the Everett Conservation Commission, and this past summer interned with the Department of Conservation and Zoning here in Marlborough. Violet has successfully completed four Advanced Placement courses and is recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar. She is currently enrolled in four additional AP courses during her senior year at Marlborough High School. Violet is currently ranked number one in her class and has a cumulative grade point average of 4.91. Violet is leaning towards majoring in physics in college next year and has an incredibly bright future ahead of her. Congratulations to Violet for her past, present, and future accomplishments. Dr. Riley, you would like to take a moment?
I would love to take some pictures.
Yes, yes.
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 Okay.
Yes, we want to celebrate our students.
Can I ask everybody to come around in front?
Can we take a brief?
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess to-
Take some pictures?
Before we recess, can we actually, yeah, sorry, I just want to say, that's pretty impressive. You guys are really impressive. And when you hear about it, it's not just academics. You are excelling in athletics, in music, in the arts, in life, I'm going to say. Pretty incredible examples. So thank you. I mean, to all of you, because you guys are going to represent Marlborough really well, as well as obviously yourselves, but, boy, it was really neat listening to all that you guys have done. So I'm sorry. Had to be said again, but they're right.
Congratulations again.
They also have any comments? Take a brief five-minute recess. And next up is Assistant Superintendent.
We, um-
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Do you want to skip?
Could we have Dr. Scazza go first?
Yep. So we'll have Dr. Scazza next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to skip right down to the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, since we have many of them in our audience tonight. On behalf of Principal Riley and the Marlborough Public Schools, I would like to congratulate the following students on their John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has created this Merit Scholarship Program to reward the hard work and achievement of students in Massachusetts, as well as to encourage our students to continue their education at a public institution of higher learning. Recipients receive the four-year John and Abigail Adams Scholarship upon acceptance to a participating Massachusetts public institution of higher education. The choice is based on outstanding MCAS results. For 2024, the following students have been selected. Victor Amendalaro, Clara Barros, Jordan Batista, Laura Benway, Luis Gustavo Bernardes, Scott Brady, Haley Brown, Carolina Burgos, Elias Birtas, Aiden Campbell, Catherine Cronin, Clarissa Cruz Bolanos, Anna Julia Cunha, Evan Davies, Megan Dennean, Leana Denny, Luana G. Olivera, Ryan Dillon, Kira Duane, Jessica Zoba, Maggie Fagan, Emanuela Fortorio, Zachary Fraser, Carlos Galacia, Galerme Enrique Garcia, Abigail Gothier, Riley Hall, Maria Hernandez Silva, Dylan Huthur, Talia Highland, Elizabeth Johnson, Rea Candaria, Risha Candaria, Rose King, Maeve Lefrenier, Isaac Morales, Nathan Milioli, Natalia Malina Morris, Luis Olivera Silva, Devon O'Rourke, Silva, Devon O'Rourke, Alexis Ott, La Grace Parker, Luis Felipe Peña, Violet Wren, Jonathan Rodas, Parker Rogers, Dylan Romano, Catherine Say, Aliyah Shabazi, Ryan Sweeney, Christopher Uwizar, Vivian Walsh, Janel Zapata, and Anika Ziobro. Congratulations to the 2024 John and Abigail- So, I did have one last thing on my report, Madam Chair, but I don't know if you want to, okay, all right, here we go. It's a professional development update. On November 7, our district held a full professional development day that was split into a morning and afternoon frame of time. The morning sessions were a continuation of our anti-bias, anti-racist, otherwise known as A-Bar, professional development that began back in November of 2021. Our high school educators explored some A-Bar-related topics more deeply, such as differentiated instruction for equity and understanding challenges that our MHS students face. Our pre-K through 8 educators practiced with some of the A-Bar lessons that have been created for our pre-K through 8 students. The first lesson of this three-lesson series will be instructed in November, December of 2023. We are very proud of the efforts of many of our staff members, who have stepped up to facilitate A-Bar training sessions, as well as the efforts of our A-Bar Steering Committee that has led this work. The afternoon sessions were a variety of offerings from our MPS Choice catalog. There were 32 total workshops, of which the majority were led by Marlboro staff. We are looking forward to another full day of professional development later this school year in March. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Okay, I would say before we move back on to Director LaFleur, if anybody would like to leave, this will be the opportunity, you don't have to stay for everything, and congratulations to all that were here. Mr. LaFleur.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really know how I can continue after all that great news. Just several quick items tonight. I've included in the school committee's folder a letter from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They have approved the current Good Now building as a new model school for the MSBA. As you're all aware, you started with a model school and expanded on that, but the new design is so successful in their eyes, they've named it a model school for the future, future use in the Commonwealth. Quick update on food service participation. We're striving very quickly to that 75% participation rate we're seeking. As a district, we hit 67 for lunch last month. Two facilities went over 75, so we're starting to hit our marks. We might have to raise it to 80. I have just a quick note on the buzzing situation and transportation. The district met with NRT representatives on November 21, 2023, with council to discuss amendment of a current agreement based on our concerns of not consistently providing services for at least four bus routes. The district's council sent a formal proposal to NRT on November 22 and had a conference call with NRT council to discuss the matter further. All parties are in ongoing negotiations to amend the contract. The district will send out an invitation for bids for a minimum of four bus routes from another vendor on December 6. It's being delayed. We have to comply with the procurement law and the bid advertising rules. So, I think that's all we really want to say about that in public. Any questions? I'm glad to take them.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just have one. Other than a lovely letter, what is being designated a model school? Does that get us anything? Is that just a lovely letter?
I think it's an honor.
Yeah.
The project went so well.
Take honors, but it'd be nice to-
They've come over here, MSBA has toured the building several times, has looked at how we've adapted it, and they believe it's a winning design. So, my kudos to everybody involved in the project. It went really well, from what I understand. I wasn't here, but it's a beautiful building.
I would say, Ms. Ryan can probably speak to, but I would assume that other districts that are looking, when they, excuse me, tour models, would tour Good Now in this case.
Yeah, that's what we did when we built Good Now. We did tour the model building that was based out of, and then just stretched it to accommodate.
That's great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So, in regards to the four bus routes that we're bidding out for, how does that affect us financially, or does that potentially come off like the bill from NRT, since they aren't providing it as they're supposed to?
Really, it's subject to the negotiation ongoing. Our contract calls for them to pay the difference for any service they can't provide on their own. So, our costs should be exactly the same. If another company comes in here and it costs more, they need to pay the difference.
Great. Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Acceptance in minutes of November, what was the date? Got to get to the page. November 14, was it? 2023. Anybody want to make a motion?
Because you can't do it. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Thank you. Public comment. Anybody here wish to make a public comment? It's awfully quiet now with everybody gone. Having no one here for public comment. Acceptance of donations and gifts. We have the MAS, sorry, MassDessi FY24 FC209 MPS for $661,061.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. And any reports of subcommittees this evening? Ms. Hennessy?
Thank you. I just wanted to let you all know that after talking with Assistant Superintendent LaFleur or Business Director LaFleur, we are going to need to have a policy subcommittee meeting to discuss an adjustment transfers to the budget policy. So, I will let everyone know a date once we settle on something, but we do need to do that rather soon. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm going to say no on negotiations. Members forum. Anybody? We should, nothing, nothing this week? No? Mr. Thomas, anything from that? Okay. Anybody else? I have, I reviewed and signed the warrant. Okay, having nothing else to discuss? Michelle, are we all sat with you? Okay. Um, shall I have the-
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn at 8:04 PM. And we are adjourned.